Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo.
Here.
Festerson is absent. Gray.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Vice President Palermo.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy Tuesday. Welcome, everybody. I just wanted to start with acknowledging that we do have a serious issue, borderline pandemic issue with coronavirus, as we're all aware. I want to thank Nebraska Medicine, the first responders, and of course, the health professionals here in the city of Omaha for being on the front line of this very serious issue. And with that being said, February is almost over, which also means we're near the end of American Heart Month. It's this time of year that you get that reminder to be a little more physical active, eat better, reduce your stress, because with everything going on, make no mistake that heart disease is the leading cause of death in the U.S., so be heart healthy. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance, in order to facilitate the conduct of the people's business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices at this time. Madam Clerk.
Item six, an application to consider a class C liquor license for the trap room located at 733 North 14th Street.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, council members. David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is here as well. This is a new license for an existing establishment due only to a change of ownership. They have been, these applicants, new owners have been open since February 1st under a temporary license. They love the neighborhood. They love the bar. They're very excited about the opportunity and would appreciate your favorable consideration today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, six to zero. Item seven, an application to consider a class I liquor license for Copal Mexican Cuisine located at 3619-3623 North 129th Street.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Romulo Vega Jr. Cynthia Lopez.
Hi.
We're representing a Copal Mexican Cuisine, and it is our hope to open the Omaha establishment here. We have actually established the first one in Lincoln in 2015, and our goal is to establish the Omaha location and then request the liquor license approval.
Thank you. Can we get your addresses for the record?
Yeah.
Yes, the address, it is 3619, 3623 North 129th Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton.
Thank you. I just want to welcome you to District Seven. Love Mexican, Mexican food. I can't wait to try your cuisine. Tell me exactly where you're located. Are you off Maple, right at 129th and Maple?
It is, it's going to be 129th and Maple where the Hero 88 is at, in that Eagle, Eagle Plaza.
Eagle Run, yep, that Eagle Run Plaza. Well, I think that's great. I hope you do very well, and I look forward to trying it out.
Thank you.
Oh, who needs approval? Sorry.
We're waiting on you.
She's thinking about what's going to be on your menu. Okay. Was there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Item eight, applications to consider special designated liquor licenses for Maloneys located at 1830 North 72nd Street for St. Patrick's Day events, March 12th through the 17th, with music until 1:00 a.m. each night.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Welcome back, ladies.
Hi. Address for the business is 1830 North 72nd Street. I'm Jordan.
I'm Chris.
And your last names are?
Ellis. Sorry. Jordan Ellis.
Chris Falkenheiner.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions?
Um, I think we don't really have any. As long as we get approval, I think we're good.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, six to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Feel free to stop by. It's, it's a very fun time.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items nine through 12 were held February 11, 2020. Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 13 through 50 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding any of these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, if you are a proponent or opponent. The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 51, a resolution to approve bid awards in the amount of $1 million for supplemental pothole repair services.
The public hearing on item 51 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
Councilman, Tony Burkalter, Local 251, 6910 Pacific Street. I represent the membership of Local 251. Last year, we came and opposed the $400,000 emergency pothole bid, and here we are again with the million dollar pothole. I want to run over a few numbers because last year I was posed the question as to what would be the solution to the emergency potholes. The city's infrastructure has been neglected many years. One thing is I had the opportunity to go back and look at the budgets from 1996 to 2020. In 2000, the city had 50/50 employees along with street department employees. Those 50/50s floated from street department to the parks department and assisted in 2010, which mentioned one of these, these council meetings. We stopped that in 2010. With the combination, in 2000, we had 186 employees doing our potholes, doing the street repairs, also going over and doing the plows in the wintertime. At that time, we had 4,200 lane miles. Today, we've successfully eliminated the 50/50 employees. It's still in the contract, but we don't utilize the 50/50 employees anymore. Today, we have 165 is what we're budgeted for in the street department, and we have a total of 5,100 lane miles to take care of. So at some point in time, you look back and you say, if we had in 2000 186 employees and today, in 2020, we have 165 that were budgeted for, you would say that you dropped the ball somewhere. So that's why I'm opposing this. I would encourage you guys to reject this and look into the underlying issues in the street department where you guys need to increase the employment staff. If the city is going to continue to grow, we have to increase the employees to maintain the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I wanted to ask Director Stube a question if I could, maybe with him not having the figures in front of him, but last year, I believe it was middle of winter, towards the end, we approved a contract for emergency pothole repair for a certain dollar amount, but I know we went above and beyond that quite a bit. Do you know, Director Stube, how much we spent on opening the door for pothole repair?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I think based off of the significant increase in the number of potholes that we had last year, we spent somewhere in the neighborhood of three and a half million, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Mr. Stube. So what I would say here is we know Omaha's growing. We know we're much closer today on the budgeted amount of street employees that we should have than we were in the past, but we're still not there. So I believe that we need to fix the roads, and I won't support this, just like I didn't before, but it's not because I don't care about fixing our roads, because I do. We've been pretty lucky this winter so far, obviously, and, and we know we have a month left. I, I know there's nothing proactive about bringing an award to contractors at the end of February for pothole repair. It seems to me that we're doing a disservice to them, Local 251 employees, that if we had 3.5 million last year in the budget, we, we put in to a workforce that didn't uphold the quality and the standards and the dedication that we know our city employees give, and here we are again, opening the door for starting at a million, but we, we just don't know how many times this will come in front of us because we don't see that after we approve this today, yes or no. I believe in the city employees. I believe that if our roads, and we all know what the future holds on trying to uphold better roads, that it would be wise to budget more employees, and instead of spending those millions on contractors, to put it into the city employees, because I believe in them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I commented last year that I didn't find myself thinking I would vote for the same kind of contract again and until and unless I was convinced that we're doing all we can to address the needs of filling positions that had been vacant in the city and addressing other critical employment issues in our city, such as addressing the recidivism of people who are coming out of the Department of Corrections who are capable of working in jobs such as this, who are, who are willing to work in jobs such as this, and, and such a career path that would provide opportunities to get training and skills, to get their commercial driver's licenses, and then advance, and then not return. So I don't think, in order to be consistent with what I said last year, that I, that I can vote in good conscience for this contract. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have a question, and it made me think when I was listening to one of the council members speak. We passed the issue last year, and I'm just going to round it off to, let's say, 500,000. Mr. Stube, and how much did we spend?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of three and a half million is what we ended up spending for, for all the potholes that we ended up taking care of.
And, and I, and we needed to do that. I'm not questioning that. With that additional money, did that ever come back in front of the council, or since we approved the, I'm using the word 500,000, am I, did I forget? Did I vote on that again for the additional money?
No. Typically, what we ended up doing is that we, we put out kind of a quantity, and we get a unit price, and in this particular case, I think it was based off of a crew size and an hourly rate, and with the, essentially the unknown relative to the number of, of times that we got pothole complaints that came in, we ended up spending above and beyond what, what was actually approved.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree with that, but I see this is where the mystery is. If I were on the outside looking in, I'd say, well, the council approved that, and we did need the, the money. I'm not saying, but to me, logic always said, well, geez, somehow the council should have been brought up to speed and say, hey, this is going to cost a couple of million more, and even have us discuss it. That's the one concern I have on how the city operates. You said something, and all of a sudden, well, we need more money. Now I'm getting back to the professional services contract, which, you know, is a little bit of an irritant to me. I understand the process, but when you vote for something at a certain level, then all of a sudden, it comes back, and you never had any input. I would not have denied that we needed it because the roads were, at that time, in terrible shape. So that's the question I have here. You approve something, and then all of a sudden, it ends up here, and I don't think that we, as a council, are kept in a loop on not just this, on a number of things. Not saying anything is wrong, but we should be kept in a loop more. Like on this one today, nobody ever came to me because they knew that this was an issue in the past. Nobody came to me and says, hey, this is the legitimate reason why we need to do that. And you may say, well, gee, Rich, you should have asked a question. No. People behind me are hired. They should provide, especially in those times, that there has been a question in the past. Now, I'm, and now I'm sidestepping that now. This year, did you not, you filled most of the positions that were causing us problems last year. Am I correct on that, Mr. Stube?
Bob Stube, Public Works. I, I'm not sure that I can give you the numbers relative. I can tell you, and, and I think we've discussed it at some of the committee meetings relative to some of the changes that have taken place relative to our coordination with the HR department as far as posting. I think more on a regular basis to try to maintain essentially a posting to allow for a continuation so that if we do run short of staff, we have the ability to, to go out and post right away.
Right, and I, and I have to come in because I think people are making an effort. Now, here's another thing. Explain to me, there are, can I use the word bonus dollars during a tough season?
What we ended up doing, working with the union, and the, the union supported this, was essentially a change to the contract relative to shifts. So what happens is, is that when we go into a winter season, we go into, we take the full complement of employees within street maintenance, and we put them into two different shifts. So we essentially have coverage of 16 hours of a 24-hour day. And so part of the problem we ran into was, was issues with regard to that shift differential, and so we came to, we provided a opportunity, and the union supported it, to pay those individuals a higher wage during that period of the year, which typically ends up being somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four months out of the year.
Right, and I need to commend whoever came up with that idea. To me, it shows that you saw a need, and to make it more, you know, because we were putting the men and women into additional hours and stressing their life because of the amount of overtime. So I do, that to me is a solution that I, I need to come in, both parties. I'm assuming the administration had a lot to do with that. So I did see that as somebody really trying to make this thing work. I'm just, this just surprises me, and maybe you, maybe you explain this to me, and I was, quote, asleep at the wheel on this million-dollar, quote, investment.
Councilmember, if I can maybe add something?
Yes.
So it's, it's somewhat typical to what we do in a lot of contracts where we have unknowns out there, and I'll use, for example, and I want to use sidewalk snow removal as an example, but we do have contracts that we put out based off of complaints relative to either no sidewalks or damaged sidewalks, and at, and again, at that particular time, we don't really know with regard to how much is actually going to be expended because it's somewhat based off of what's going to occur. And so we do this, we do it with utility contracts also, where we put off, put out contracts. We estimate a quantity. We get contractors put prices to it, and there's always the potential that we might end up paying zero, or we could pay 10% of the contract, or we could even pay more than the contract that was awarded, similar to what we did with, with regard to the pothole contractors last year.
And I do understand the quandary you're in, because good year, bad year, depending on the amount of snow, is a significant factor. I get that. I just think that somewhere along the line as we move through this process, that we ought to be more informed so we feel more comfortable about this. So what I just heard from you, though, you're saying this million dollars is sort of like a safeguard. It's, it's not going to be used.
Yeah, we don't anticipate that at, at this point in time, looking outside and seeing what the weather forecast is for the next week, that, that we would anticipate that we would need to utilize this, these particular contractors at, at this point in time, but, but this is a, an yearly contract, so if we do get into a situation where there's a demand that might be, and again, I've always talked about it from the perspective as, as having resources to essentially shave off the peak is what I talk about.
Okay, then what happened to us last year, then? It was just so much snow that we had not planned for having contractors?
Yeah, again, we, we have a dedicated staff within the street maintenance division that we utilize during the, but, but during February, I think we pretty much were plowing snow, if I'm not mistaken, and so we got in, and based on the quantity of snow, the snow that came, you know, in the, at, at the end of 18, quantity of snow, temperatures, and all that led to what we've experienced last year, which was a significant increase in the, in the quantity of, of pothole situations that we ran into.
Okay, so this year, we're, we're going to designate this money for additional potholes. We have not, we did not do that last year before the snow? Is that?
No.
I, I just need to know that. Did we have a million dollars already set aside for contractors?
Well, we, we budget within the street maintenance division for pavement maintenance, and so there's monies within, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood, 18 and 19 million dollars is budgeted for pavement maintenance. And so that ends up being the, what, what is the division that, of budgeted money that would be utilized for these types of outside services.
And I understand that, but I'm, and maybe I'm in a different world right now, but last year, we had to approve an amount. What I'm saying is, did we, because I can't recall, did before that, did we have already approved, approve, like, let's say, a million dollars for this account?
You, you did not. Again, these are, that last year was a situation where, based again on the, on the winter that we were having, we knew that, and also with the quantity of complaints that were coming in relative to potholes, we knew that there was going to be a significant peak that needed to be addressed, and so this is a way to handle that, that increase in the number of, of complaints.
And, and again, I'm just saying, I'm going to back up. Four or five years, have we designated a certain amount ahead of time for contractors, like this is doing?
For this particular operation? No. I think the last time that we did it, we had a real bad winter. At the end of 2009, 2010, we utilized outside contractors to assist us in this, in the spring, late, late winter of 2010, and then it was in the 2019 that we also utilized contractors, and we're trying to get ahead of the game here by, by getting this particular contractors approved so that if we have a need, we've got the, the contractors and a price relative to utilizing them.
And I'm just going to push this a little bit more. I could feel comfortable, for the most part, this money will not be used this year unless we have a unbelievable March, April.
Yeah, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we're, we're not going to have a prolonged type of, of winter. Obviously, we're seeing today is we're not having the quantity of snow. We're not having the temperatures. We're not seeing snow piled up on the curb lines that is, is thawing during the day and then refreezing at night, which is, is what we experienced last year with that continuous cycle of freeze-thaw that ended up getting us into the situation. We've also seen with some of the efforts performed last year relative to resurfacing and, and projects that the state did, that we don't anticipate. At, at this point in time, we don't anticipate that we would have any contractors assist us, you know, right? Because we, we are filling potholes today, and we're keeping up with the, the quantity of, of complaints that are coming in.
Okay. To make me feel comfortable with this, I see this as basically an emergency. You're just getting ahead of the emergency in case the men and women who work in the department cannot handle the load.
Correct. This essentially is establishing a price with a number of contractors, and there's always a potential that we won't need them at all.
Or it will go much higher.
Or it could go higher. It could go lower. It could go higher. At this point in time, we've estimated a million dollars as being what the expenditure would be.
And, and I can leave this particular topic, knowing that our positions, or most of the positions have been filled. I know it's in and out because of, that's the way life is, but you feel comfortable that most of the positions in the city have been filled, so we're not doing this because we have not filled a good many of the positions. Can I?
No, again, we have, we have crews on the street every day filling potholes, and like I said, based on the report.
I know you have crews on it. I'm, I know they're working hard.
Yeah.
But let's say that you, and I'm just going to throw a number out. Let's say, if we're supposed to have 100, you have close to 100 people. It's not like 70.
Yeah, and again, no, I don't believe so. Again, I don't have those numbers in front of me to assist you with, with the accuracy of that response.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. Actually, I just wanted to touch a little bit on the, the flexibility and why I think that's, in this situation, why it's going to be a good thing that, that this would get approved. Just doing some quick math, if it's, and again, this is only an up-to amount. It doesn't necessarily mean that that will be spent. And when you look at, I think, last week, I think there were 118 complaints that came into the mayor's hotline on, for potholes. Last year, same time, was over 1,000. I think last year, we had about 48 inches of snow. This year, we've had about 14, and we're currently, I think, the fourth driest February on record. So it, it just goes to show you how one year can be so much different than the last year, and if you, if you equate, if it were a million dollars, and the, the position that this pays would be, with benefits, probably somewhere around $60,000, that would be probably a total of 16 full-time equivalent employees that you would need to make that balance out, or for that to make, I think, financial sense. And then my question would be, you know, is there demand for those additional 16 employees for the, the other, you know, months of the year where they're not filling potholes? So I think the, I think the ability to, to have a good budget, well-thought-out, and then have this flexibility to make up for those years where we may or may not need the additional services to, to fill the potholes, I think this is, is a good strategy to address the issue, so I will be supportive of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tony, if you could come to the mic for a minute for me. I, I just want you to explain, I think I know, but for the record, you talked about 50/50. Tell me what that is.
Tony Burkalter, 6910 Pacific Street. 50/50 employees were employees who cut grass in the summertime. In the wintertime, they, they plow streets. In the spring, they do potholes.
Okay, and so, and so is this, this seasonal work, or is this, is that?
No, that's full-time. That's full-time.
It's full-time work?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. That, that's the only question I have for you. Dr. Thompson, how many of these, the, the companies that are listed here, tier one or tier two companies?
I have to do a little bit of cross-checking for you on that. I don't have that answer right at the tip of my tongue.
Okay.
But I'll definitely.
I just dropped it on you because I just, I saw the companies here. I just dropped it on you because I just, I saw the companies here, and, and I've, I've seen a couple of them before, but I just was wondering how many of them were tier one or tier two companies?
I actually looked at that this morning.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, if, Mr. President, do you mind if I pipe in?
Councilmember Gray, will you yield the Councilmember-
I'll yield the Councilmember Melton.
So I, it actually was in, in my box, and it was on like the third sheet of the printout that Public Works gives us. Bob, do you happen to have that? Because I looked at them this morning, and I believe all of them were, and one of them was 100%. One, and in fact, I have it sitting right on top of my desk right now. One was 100%. They were all well over the percentage threshold that we like to see.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I really have it, and I can give it to you. So, and it's a good question, and I, I looked at it today.
Okay.
To make sure of that, when I saw this on our agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
For my benefit, could you read the names?
The names are B&amp;W Company Incorporated, Blade Masters Ground Maintenance Incorporated, DIY Holding Company LLC, DPS LLC, NL &amp; L Concrete Incorporated, and Pave 911.
At least half of them are.
At least half?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray and Melton. Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple more questions if I could. Director Stube, if this were approved today, when would this take effect, or when would this money be available if needed?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So again, we have monies in the budget for street maintenance division that is, that is listed as pavement maintenance, which again, I think is 18 to 20 million, somewhere in that neighborhood. I don't know if that popped in my head. This, this would essentially get, if, if you approve this today, we would then get, I believe, just have contracts then with the individual contractors, and that money, again, is already in budget.
Okay, so it'd be, if we got 20 inches of snow on Friday, this would be available?
Don't say that.
No, I, yeah, I take that back. Three inches of snow.
Once again, I, e- even if we got three inches of snow, I don't anticipate, again, because of the fact, and I'm looking at, as, as Councilmember Harding indicated, the, the quantity of complaints that come in for potholes, and so we get a report every week from street maintenance identifies how many complaints have come in, how many work orders are generated, and the, the quantity of work orders that are being generated related to potholes is not, at this point in time, a need to have these contractors come out and assist us for this late winter, early spring situation.
Okay, thank you. I'll call on you in a minute. So let's just say the money's available tomorrow. Obviously, my biggest problem with this is I believe in the city employees we have, not in the contractors. The other part is, it's the end of February. So let me ask, who goes and buys a shovel right now for the winter? Who goes and buys a snow blower? What lawn and snow companies go buy a pallet of material right now for winter? We should have seen this in October, if not earlier, if we were going to have this just for a rainy day. We've already heard that if we get a lot of snow, which none of us want, that last year, we had an emergency contract for $400,000 come before us, that we ended up spending 3.5 million. So why would we approve this today, knowing we had the luxury of approving an emergency contract in case we needed it? Because we could do them right away. So let me ask you again, Director Stube, if I could, do you know what a four-man Public Works pothole crew cost to run for the city?
I don't.
Bob Stube, Public Works. I don't know off the top of my head, and, and again, it comes down to when, when you start looking at hourly wage benefits, you know, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, of $100 an hour per employee.
If, if you had to guess, because I know we talked about this before, and I, I believe I remember the contractors being, if not twice as much, they were quite a bit more. Would, would a four-man contractor crew that we hired with this million dollars be more than the, than the four-person crew we would hire, or that it would cost the city of Omaha to run?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So again, if you look at the item in front of you, there's a range here of those contractors showing crew and equipment cost per hour, anywhere from 5, 535 on the low end to 730 on the high end.
Okay, so, thank you, Director Stube. So, so we can say that we know for sure with what we have in front of us, that the contractors cost more than our own employees. So let me ask Law, if I could, a question.
Paul Kretz, City Attorney.
Hey, Paul, let me ask you this. Do most bids we get in front of us, if, say, they're all qualified and, and, and on the tiers we're looking for, and in that same range, do we approve generally the low bid on a contract?
Yes, we do. It's usually the lowest and best bid.
Okay, thank you. So, so we always approve the lowest bid, we always approve the best bid. These are city employees who get benefits, medical, dental, health, retirement. They are the best employees we have. It's not the contractors. They're in uniform, they're out in the street, they're using the safety that they're required to use. These are the employees that are the best. So we know by approving this, it's, it's not the lowest, and it's definitely not the best. So don't approve it, and if there's an emergency contract that we need, then go that route. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Palermo. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be brief, because Councilmember Palermo asked a question, or made the statement that, that, that I was thinking about making. I'm not sure where these companies would be right now in terms of getting ready for, it would seem like they were getting ready for summer instead of getting ready for, or spring, instead of getting ready for winter, and buying, you know, various kinds of equipment to address, you know, winter at this point with these companies, I think would, I, I think kind, in a way, does them a disservice, but more importantly, I, I think we need to really look at, you know, some of the things mentioned earlier by our, our council president, in terms of hiring and, and, and other things like that, and, and our council vice president as well, in terms of making sure that we address our, our city employees, and if we have a union that believes they can do the work, or can get the work done, are, are, and are opposed to doing it this way, I, I think that also has some merit as well. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just go back to the, the cost of this as well too, but first of all, I'll repeat that this offers flexibility, it can vary from year to year, it's an up to amount, but then as, as it relates to the cost for it, so the, the bids basically range from, I think, 535 to $730 per hour for a four-man crew, which includes both personnel and equipment. So Director Stube's quick estimate of, of $400 to $500 for a four-man crew does not include equipment costs. So when you add in equipment, I'm, I'm sure that this is probably, this is, this, you know, it's, it's definitely, I think, I think it's a good, a good deal for the city, and it's not, I don't think it's adding any additional cost to what the, the internal cost would be with those four-man crews, four-person crews, as well as, again, remembering that this is just for the pothole services, and wanting to know through the budget process that if there is that additional work that these employees could be utilized for year-round.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Melton?
Yes, and I, I just wanted to follow up with that. The cost, because I was looking on here, the cost per hour is for equipment and labor. So that, that would be the difference, where this actually makes it a better deal for, for the city at this point in time. And I think the other thing is, is, you know, we want to make sure that the streets are getting repaired. What I don't want to do is punish drivers and citizens, because maybe we're having this, this disagreement with how many employees to hire. Well, the bottom line is, we, we need to make sure that the potholes get filled for our citizens, because we're not paying for the pothole repair to their vehicles this year. At least I haven't seen anywhere. Am I correct, Mr. Curtis?
Could you repeat your question?
We're not paying for any pothole claims this year.
That's correct.
Okay, so we want to make sure that we're getting those potholes filled. And I, I've seen potholes pop up. I know that there are 118, but I've got potholes that have popped up just outside my neighborhood already, so although it's not nearly as bad as last year, I do want to make sure that we don't have a repeat of last year, and I, I do want to make sure that we have this. And, and also, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing to support our small businesses, and people that maybe don't want to work for the city, but maybe have their own business and have employees that work for their small business. And I think a lot of city employees maybe work at the city and then start their own businesses. I think there are a lot of people that have, that have done that, and that's a good thing, that's a good thing for them. I mean, I, I don't think we mind that. Is that correct, Mr. Stube? I know, you don't mind, I mean, training people, giving them some experience. I know you'd like to keep them, but that's also good for our community when, when they're doing things, and then start their, start their own business, and then we have small business owners that are able to start their own companies and provide other jobs.
Bob Stube, Public Works. So it's part of the reason why that we have a number of contracts, and we've also, I've been at the city long enough to help develop the small emerging business program, and so that's another opportunity for us to allow for contracts to be given to the small contractors, with the hope that someday they'll blossom into larger contractors to be able to lar, do larger work, such as Spencer Management and some of the other contractors that do work for us on a regular basis, that are now taking on the role of doing million-dollar contracts for us.
Oh, I, I, I think that's, that's good news. It shows growth of Omaha in supporting people who do have dreams of, of owning their own business. So I appreciate that, and I'll be voting for the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. The issue that I had in the past is, we were not hiring enough people, so we got way behind. I have been informed today that is not an issue. It's not an issue, because we have people. I see this contract as a maybe. We might use it, we may not, in case something significantly, significantly happens. But if we have enough people who are working, and we do give those, what I call, and I'm using the word bonus, that will keep the attitude pretty positive, even though they have to maybe work longer hours, I think that's a win for the city. And we'll have a safety plan, that's what I see this. In fact, what has happened today is what I like to see happen more often, because even though we may have some disagreements, we're cleaning us out, the public knows that we just don't rubber stamp, that we really try to give some thought. And I'm going to challenge the departments, if something significant, they probably know what's going to be a hotspot, I don't mean where to put the police out, but we have a hotspot, they should probably talk to us a little bit more. And maybe they are, and I'm just not aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. I hate to belabor this, but, Mr. Stube, tell me how, what is the likelihood, based on what you see the weather being now, and the number of potholes that you're seeing pop up, what is the likelihood that any or all of these companies are going to get work?
Again, if I look into my crystal ball, based off of the quantity of potholes and the work orders that we currently have, the ability for staff to address the issues at this point in time, which they have been doing, the fact is, is that the forecast that I saw today shows a week out that there's, there's no situation that where we're going to get a lot of snow, a lot of freeze thaw, that might end up creating more issues. I, I do not anticipate that we're going to need those resources like we did in 2019. Keeping in mind is that the, the majority of the work that the contractors did in 19 was, was somewhat, majority of it was after the, the asphalt plants opened up, which currently they are not open, and it'll probably be a couple of weeks yet before they actually open up. But, but again, based on all that, I don't anticipate that we should need those contractors after this winter season, but it does give us the ability that if we do run into problems later on this year, or after the first of the year, that we've got these contractors available to perform that work for us.
Okay, let me kind of turn that around a little bit, and let me ask, so are, are we making the assumption here, I mean, or is there a possibility that they will, they will not get any work at all?
Well, I can't say that we're not going to give them any work at all. I'm saying, at this point in time, it goes back to what Councilmember Harding indicated, it gives us the flexibility that if in the future, under this particular contract, within a year, that if we need those because of unforeseen situations, that we have these contractors that have identified a cost to the city performing that work, and it could be one crew, it could be two, it could be multiple, it just kind of, again, comes down to what the potential need might be.
Okay. I, I just don't want contractors here, especially when we're talking about a number of, the, the number of contractors here that are small emerging contractors, I don't want them leaving here thinking that at some point in time, they're going to get work from the city, if something happens, if in fact, that's not going to occur, and we don't know that it is, so we can't promise them that. And I don't want them to, I don't want them to expect that this, that, that they're going to get, you know, any significant work out of this. My second comment is, I still don't think we have enough employees, quite frankly, and, but I think that needs to be addressed at a different point in time. I think the argument of, of, you know, this kind of just being a placeholder, and something we may or may not use, as long as we don't go over the, you're saying we can go up to a million dollars, is that accurate?
It's just estimated.
That's just an estimate of a hun, of a million dollars?
That, that's correct, Bob Stube, Public Works. It's an estimate of a million dollars, based again, off of what the, the bid prices are, and, and what we anticipate the quantity could be.
Okay. This is, I mean, in a way, this is, I'm, I'm glad that we, that we see these, these, these companies here, and, and several of them, or at least half, as, as Dr. Thompson points out, are small emerging businesses. So on the one hand, you know, we have that, that, I have that concern, that, that making sure that our small emerging businesses grow. But the other hand, I, I don't know that we have employees, but I think the argument of this being a placeholder or something, I, I'll have to give it some thought, and I'll make a decision when it's time to vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? There's no further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
No.
Palermo.
No.
Gray.
No.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion fails, three to three. Item 52, ordinances to approve an agreement with the University of Nebraska Human DNA Identification Laboratory in the amount of $10,000, and to authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2018 Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant Award.
The public hearing on item 52 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
One public hearing will be held for items 53 and 54, ordinances to transfer $60,489 and $2,185,675 in unencumbered appropriations in the 2020 budget of the City of Omaha from the Wage Adjustment Account to the City Fire Department.
The public hearing on item 53 and 54 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 55, BJ's Fleet Wash appeals the rejection of their bid from August 21st, 2019, for the RFP custodial services for the City of Omaha Park Facilities Projects.
Is the appellant here on item 55, do you wish to be heard? If you'd provide your name and address, and the basis for your appeal.
Rodney Johnson, 6716 North Bridge Drive, Omaha, Nebraska. Took a lot of interest in 51, that, the exchange between Palermo and Legal was interesting, and the interest in doing business with tier ones, that's a big deal. But I'd like to read a statement. Dear City Councilmembers, the reference RFP document, with release date July 31st, 2019, the RFP addendum number one dated August 16th, 2019, my three letters dated January 13th, 2019, January 17th- my three letters dated January 13, 2019, January 17, 2019, and February 7, 2020. The Omaha City Council and one letter dated January 27, 2020 to Councilman Ben Gray from Spencer McGruder will all be incorporated into this rejection appeal hearing. Every invitation forbids for promises to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder qualifies that promise with a sentence like this. The agency reserves the right to reject any or all bids as general rule for the agency has the discretion to reject all bids. However, that discretion cannot be abused. U.S. Officer Comptroller. Massman Construction Company versus U.S. 1945 explained almost 75 years ago to have a set of bids discarded after they are opened and each bidder has learned his competitor's price is a serious matter, and it should not be permitted except for cogent reasons. The basic issue presented by this bid rejection appeal is whether the grounds for discretionary actions taken by the City of Omaha Parks, Recreation, and Public Property Department Director constitutes cogent and compelling reasons to support the rejection of all bids contemplated by the City of Omaha. My bid rejection appeal focuses on four issues as follows. The record is clear and unambiguous. BMI Janitorial Group proposal response submitted to the City of Omaha on August 21, 2019 did not conform to the mandatory items as provided in the RFP's instruction. The Omaha City Council, in its January 28, 2020 Senate Council meeting, properly denied the motion to approve ordinance 42122 as a legislative body and was mute on the PRPP Department Director's ensuing administrative procurement decisions and actions. The City of Omaha, January 31, 2020 notification of intent to reject all bids for this RFP, if factuated, would be an error of judgment and would constitute an administrative procurement action that would be arbitrary, capricious, and abuse of discretion. Based on the record, the Omaha City Council must rescind the notification of intent to reject bids, all bids, instruct the PRPP Department to rescind the rejection of BJ's Fleet Wash's LLC's RFP proposal, and grant BFW proposal just consideration for the contract and award of custodial services at various recreational facilities in the City of Omaha to avoid litigation. There's a few bullet points that I'd like to go over. I don't know how to use this Elmo.
If you just place them on that face up, that, we'll have someone turn on the light. Then rotate them to your right. There you go.
I wanted to focus on the RFP in question, the procurement procedures, Section 3. I just wanted to clear the record on that. The Law Department said the last time that should the items that were mandatory weren't mandatory. And I want to read the statement that proposals that do not conform to the mandatory items as provided in the proposal instructions will not be considered. BMI's RFP proposal submission failed to conform to mandatory items as provided in the RFP's instruction. The subject RFP used the same or similar language proposal submission language that has been used in Douglas County and the City of Omaha RFP selection documents for the past 10 years. With reference to that, in the January 28, 2020 Council meeting, I think Spencer McGruder gave you guys the stats on that, and he also showed you about 10 years' worth of documents that stated that the language had been the same. But if you want to, we can go over it. It's been about 425 vendors, 403 of them had complied, and that's a 94.8% vendor compliance record. Is this rate of vendor compliance indicative of RFP proposal submissions instructions that are ambiguous, conflicting, or confusing? Based on the record, as BMI's failure to conform to mandatory items as provided in the RFP's instruction, a material deviation from the RFP's bid specifications.
Sir, we're not here on the BMI. We're here on your bid appeal.
Exactly.
So what's the basis of your appeal?
These are the basis of the appeals.
That bid was rejected.
Right.
So you're now appealing your rejection, right?
Well, actually, there was a rejection of all bids.
Right. So what is the basis of your appeal?
Okay, we'll get to that.
Well, you're going to have to get to it quickly because you're not on point here.
Okay. Bullet point number two. The record shows that on January 28, 2019, Omaha City Council rejected the motion to approve ordinance 42122 and ordinance to approve an agreement with BMI for custodial services at various recreational facilities in the City of Omaha. However, the letter dated January 29 from the City of Omaha Parks Recreation and Public Property Department Director stated that all proposals were rejected by the Omaha City Council and that the rejection of all bids by the City of Omaha City Council was due to conflicting criteria in the required document specifications. So when we're referencing BMI, we're talking about BMI because on January 28, the only thing that was presented to the Omaha City Council was approval of the bid from BMI.
Do you have that letter?
Yes, we have the rejection.
Would you put that up on the Elmo, please?
The letter is actually in your guys' documents, but I thought I had a copy of it.
Okay, please proceed. The clerk has the letter you're referencing.
Yes, sir.
And it says what you said it says.
Right. So we were trying to figure out, when did the City Council make the decision to reject all bids? Because I didn't think that that was on the agenda for the City Council. And what was meant by conflicting criteria in the required documentation specifications? What are the conflicting criterias in the required document specifications? And how many past public procurement proposals have the City Council ever rejected?
So as I understand, point two, your position is the City Council only took action on its agenda to reject BMI's appeal.
Yes, sir.
It did not reject the others. So what is the basis for the city's action to quote, "claim a rejected appeal"?
Right. What is the basis for the City of Omaha rejecting?
Try to get an answer to that.
My bid, BJ's Fleet Wash's bid.
Okay.
As part of it. But the...
What else do you have for your basis of your appeal?
Well, bullet point number three is this. What we're really trying to get to is the procurement process and explain, we would like to know the official process for a rejection of all bids by the City Council. I mean, I have a list of questions that I can go through, but...
How many do you have?
Probably about eight.
Well, I should name them off, and we'll try to get through as many as are germane and get the answers from City Legal if we can.
Okay.
Does that sound like the plan?
That'd be awesome. I'd like to know what's the official process, like I mentioned.
To reject appeals?
No, for the City Council to reject all bids. Because I don't think I've ever seen...
Well, that's kind of in point two.
Yeah.
But we'll try to get an answer to that.
Yeah.
All right, what's the next one?
Is the RFP standards and conditions terms defective? Because there is a mention of defective or conflicting criteria in my rejection letter.
All right.
Is the scope of work requested in the proposal defective?
Okay.
Procurement procedure defective? The project description of scope of work defective? Exhibits A through F, were they defective? Does the revised specification cited in the City of Omaha January 31, 2020 notification of intent to reject all bids refer to the conflicting criteria in the required document specifications cited in January 29, 2020? The letter from the Omaha Parks Department Director. So there was a, what was listed on the website was revised specification. And what was sent to me in the letter was conflicting criteria. So we're trying to figure out, is it just the need for the revised specifications? Or is there a problem with the criteria? So that's why those questions were trying to figure out, hammer out, what was so confusing in this bid, this RFP, that had not been confusing in the last 10 years? You know, where was the need to go away from what is traditionally done is the rejection of the bidder who did not comply? And then just moving along the page to the bidders who did comply, you know? So I know that you guys talked about item 51. You've taken every avenue that you can to utilize small business and small emerging businesses. But in this situation, it just seemed that we got completely away from that. And we're just trying to try to figure out how we can get some answers to some of those things.
All right, we'll stick around close in case we want to call you back up, okay?
Okay.
We'll have City Legal, is it Mr. Weeson or Ms. Peters? Weeson, the first question, I think, was the main one, and then we have these other ones, was, have you seen the letter from the Parks Director?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, I have.
Okay. That letter says that the City Council rejected all of the bids, or all the proposals that were submitted. And his question was, he thought all we did in public action was reject the BMI bid.
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney, that is correct. I think what Mr. Bench's intention was, was to convey in his letter that he believed that it was the opinion of the City Council after all the discussion that we had over those two meetings, that there is perhaps some ambiguity in the language that requested copies of the proposals, whether or not it was required or whether or not it was discretionary. And I believe that he was trying to convey that in his letter. Perhaps it could have been worded a little better, but I think the letter does convey that intention to the bidders.
All right. So when this gentleman asks what the term conflicting criteria means, it's your opinion that was Mr. Bench's choice of words to describe what he interpreted was what the comments of the council were during those two meetings?
That is my understanding.
And that would have been his interpretation of the contents of the bid specs themselves?
Correct. There was lengthy discussion on, again, whether or not the electronic and paper copies were a mandatory requirement or whether they were just a request discretionary requirement that could be waived. And I think it was the opinion of, ultimately, of the council that there was some ambiguity in that, and that was why the contract was not approved.
And would that include the scope, the description, and the exhibits A through F? In your interpretation of what the letter was intending to communicate as the appellant asks? Or are you just expressing in general sense what you believe Mr. Bench was trying to interpret?
It's my understanding that that was limited to the request for copies itself and was not extended to the other specifications. That's my understanding.
Okay. Now, another question the appellant has, or had, as I heard, was, isn't the normal process when a bid is rejected by the council that the matter is sent back to the department that had the bid for the department's determination of whether to proceed to award the next or recommend awarding the next lowest and best bidder, rather than doing what Mr. Bench did and just saying, well, it's my interpretation that this is what the council wanted to do, and therefore I'm rejecting all the bids?
I don't know that there is a normal process because it doesn't happen that frequently, and every situation is different and unique. Again, I think the overall impression was that there was a, that Mr. Bench received from the council that there was an issue with how the request for proposals was worded. And he felt it was best to remove that issue and repost it, as opposed to try and muddle through it again.
Would you agree that the appellant is correct, that the only action that the City Council took was to reject the proposal of BMI? It did not take action or recommend through action on the other proposals?
I think, it would be my opinion that the only item on the council's agenda was whether or not to approve the contract, and the council chose not to approve the contract on that date.
Thank you. If we can call the appellant, if you would stick close. If we could call the appellant back up and ask you, did that answer, or at least satisfy the questions that you had as to where they're coming from?
Well, it's an answer.
I'm not saying you'd agree with it. I'm just saying, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, it's an answer. I think we'd be going back into the initial reason for the council rejection of BMI's bid in the first place because four of you felt the same way that the procurement procedure was, you know, clearly stated.
You are aware that the director of the department, who was the division within the city that put this matter out for proposals, reserves the right, under the city code, to reject any bids and all bids?
Yeah, for a compelling reason. And that's how I think where our struggle is at completely. Because, you know, you have one bidder with a history of not complying to bid instructions. And now the entire bid pool is kind of thrown out because this one bidder could not comply, which he has a history of.
Part of the, were you here for the two prior hearings on the BMI? Did you hear the council, numerous council members raised concerns about what they thought the language of the proposal meant in terms of certain terms, should or must and shall? And there was, there were some people that were called up from the audience. I think Mr. McGruder was one of them, has had his interpretation what those meant. Then there was the legal interpretation of what they meant. And then some councils said, why should you need a law degree to do business with the city? And so if the council's vote in not awarding that contract was in part reflective of those sorts of comments, then how, why would this council, in your opinion, be wise to award anyone a bid based upon that language?
I'd like to allow Mr. McGruder to answer that question, if that's okay?
Well, we can call, yeah, Mr. McGruder, I'll call you up.
Spencer McGruder, 1524 Cummins. Thank you, Council President. Real quick, just a cogent reason for rejection of bids. Mr. Stube's, this is an example of Mr. Stube's department. They went out for a rubber tire loader for the wastewater treatment, Missouri wastewater treatment plant. Had, what, five bids, six bids. The low bidder was noncompliant. Again, reserve the right to reject all bids as a department head, okay? But he had a cogent reason. Reason. He explained that in his letter. His cogent reason was emission control, okay? The spec clearly said you need to have a tier four emission control. The low bidder, Bobcat, submitted something with the tier three emission control. Cogent reason. All we're saying here is that the fact that one bidder did not comply with the requirements, the instructions, which clearly the RFP spells out in Section 3, procurement requirements, that proposals that do not conform to the mandatory items provided in the proposal instructions will not be considered. That's what makes that language on the instruction page a must. This clause right here, and it's within the body of the RFP after the bold area that Mr. Weeson pointed out the last time. This bold text, well, it's contained in the body of the RFP. So that's what makes that a requirement, and that's what makes them noncompliant. And that's where the department, the Parks Department, has not given us a cogent, compelling reason to justify, based on the city's past history. Mr. Stube's department, other departments. You don't throw out all the bids simply because... You don't throw out all the bids simply because one bidder didn't comply.
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. McGruder. Given what I just asked the appellant, if it is in fact the vote of the council to not award the bid at the last meeting to BMI, in part, in consideration of the council's concern regarding the wording and the interpretation of wording, which you are now revisiting, wouldn't the director be unwise not to follow that guidance, to take the opportunity to reject all proposals and clear up the proposal so everyone's on the same playing field in terms of the language and what it means?
I understand. And here's where the problem comes in, it's consistency, okay? One department is inconsistent with the other. The Public Works Department does it according to, well, it's irrefutable. The Parks Department does it a different way. That is the definition of arbitrary. You've got two departments doing two different things, handling, following the procurement process, and coming out with two different results. One just goes to the next bidder, the other one throws out all the bids.
See, I'm almost thinking that this is an example of no good deed goes unpunished, because I thought the director was going to use this opportunity to work with City Legal and Public Works, to come up with a template of very simple wording and language to express what you are required to submit versus what you may elect to submit, so that the playing field would be fair for the bidders. But you're saying that's not what it's doing, it's that we should go to the next bid, which happens to be this gentleman.
Well, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, the process needs to be fair and equitable to all parties, okay? And in that, being consistent. In that situation, all stakeholders are taken care of. Public interest is served. Now, if you just want to, over the last 10 years, you can, give me a year, I can show you documentation that the RFP, 2016, 2015, 2014, all the way back to 2010, that's as far as I went back, but it went back further, okay? They all have the same standard language. They all say, "Bidders shall submit X number of copies and electronic copies," in the instructions. But all of them, under Section 3 procurement requirements, in the RFP, in the body of the RFP, says, "If you don't follow, if you don't follow the mandatory procurement requirements, your bid will not be considered." So all I'm saying is, how can Mr. Stube in Public Works have a noncompliant bid and say, okay, he's noncompliant, we're not considering him because he didn't comply with the spec, and we're going to the next one? All I'm asking you to do the same thing as this one.
Right, but what my understanding of wherein lied, the issue that we were faced with, is our city's attorneys were providing us with a different interpretation of the same language that you came to a different conclusion on as to what it meant. And so why would we, I can only speak for myself, why would we not heed that legal counsel and say, "There's an issue here, because reasonable people can disagree."
Right.
"You were on the other side of the interpretation, and so why not take this opportunity to clean it all up?"
Because we have 10 years of facts to back it up. And that's, and this is your, this will be the copy that we give to the, and there's electronic copy with it.
Okay, so let's make sure that the appellant is offering that for the record.
Absolutely. So, so...
Now, did you have something else you want to say, because we...
I think...
I have lights on from council members.
I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay. Stick around.
Okay.
And make that as part of the record, the clerk will receive it. Thank you, Mr. McGruder. Councilmember Melton?
Thank you. And Mr. McGruder, I mean, you're making excellent arguments, you truly believe in your argument, but I think what we have is, we've got lawyers that believe one way, you believe another, and Mr. Jarman and I are in court every day doing this, and sometimes the judge agrees with my side, sometimes the judge agrees with the other side. I still always think I'm right, even when the judge disagrees. And then sometimes we take it to the appellate court or the Supreme Court, and then sometimes they actually agree with me and not the judge that did disagree with me. So what I'm saying is, I don't want to sit here and state whether, or try and determine whether you're right, or legal department's right. I think the fact that we're even here to argue, and I want to say, the last Supreme Court case I did, what the two lawyers and I both agreed on, the statute is bad. That's what we told the Supreme Court. We still made our arguments, but we both agreed the statute was poorly written. In my opinion, I think because we're even having this argument means that it is ambiguous. I disagree with you on the interpretation, because it doesn't say shall, it says should, but my opinion is, again, if you have to argue about the meaning of it, that shouldn't be in our bid document. So what I appreciate is the fact that that's what Mr. Bench, I think, decided, okay, I just need to fix the bid document, because there was hours of discussions, I want to fix the bid document, which I appreciate. And so that's where I appreciate the fact that what Mr. Bench wants to do is do it right. Now, I have, I have a question, and Ryan, are you back? I can't see you.
Yeah, he's there.
But can a, can a department reject all bids? I mean, here, I believe that conflicting ambiguous language is a compelling reason, but we also have Mr. McGruder saying that it's not ambiguous, so, you know, we're disagreeing on whether it's ambiguous or not. But what is the standard, what, what does a department head have to meet, what element does it have to prove and/or meet in order to reject all bids? Or can a department head just reject all bids because he or she wants to?
Ryan Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney. Section 10-110 of our municipal code, the first sentence states, "The city reserves the right to reject any or all bids received for any city purchase or contract, period." And then it goes on for quite some time, it doesn't provide a standard.
There isn't any standard that they have to prove this, or they have to come to some conclusion, or it has to be for some compelling reason?
Not within our city code. I did hear in the prior testimony, there was, I think, one or maybe two cases that were quoted that had to do with, I believe, federal procurement statutes, and those are different, those case, that case law wouldn't apply.
Right, federal case law doesn't apply.
To the interpretation of our municipal code.
And so then I just have one other, I have one other question. Can we override a rejection of all the bids? Does the, I mean, I think, we don't have to get to my second question after your answer to my first question, but I still want to ask it. Do we have the ability to override the rejection of all bids?
Is this, is the question really, since this is the only appellant, do we have the authority to override the only person?
Just one, right.
Because only one appealed.
That's correct.
That would be correct. You only have the ability today to overturn the department's rejector of the bidder, rejected bidder who appealed. You can't unilaterally overrule the rejection of all bids, because they haven't appealed to this body.
And that was my question. In the, in the event that we wanted to say, "Mr. Bench, go review all of them," we wouldn't be able to, because, and I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that the second one isn't going to be the lowest and best, I'm kind of looking at the big picture of this doesn't give Brook Bench then the opportunity to review the remaining bids and pick which one is the lowest and best bid, because it may not be just the second bidder.
Correct. The only issue before the council is the appeal of BJ's Fleetwash.
And in the letter that we send, we actually stayed in there that the city department reserves the right to reject all bids.
That's in our municipal code and in the bid specifications itself.
But it's in the bid specification itself?
That's correct.
And that language is not ambiguous?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. And before we get to Councilmember Gray, I'd just remind the appellant, if you have anything for the city clerk to make a part of their record, please remember to submit it to her. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Let me ask you a question, because here's what's going to happen. Let me ask it this way. Mr. Bench, are we going to rebid this contract?
If the Parks Director would come to the microphone and clarify himself.
Sure he will.
Okay.
Brook Bench, Parks Recreation.
Are we going to reject, are we going to rebid this project?
That is the plan. We're going to reject everything and start it all over.
Okay, now my question is to the Law Department, because one of the issues that was raised by the appellant was that, because now his bid has been exposed, the only fair thing to do in their judgment, and I'm not saying that it's right, but I do have the question, you know, now that their bid has been exposed, are they at a disadvantage now?
Ryan Wiesen, Assistant City Attorney, I don't believe that there is any legal disadvantage or codified disadvantage. This is, again, the rejection of all bids and rebidding is not unheard of in city code, it's happened before multiple times. We've never been held that anybody's at a disadvantage after that. Additionally, for example, the statement that for the past 10 years, we have not, or somehow not rejected other bidders who have failed to provide copy, electronic or paper copies in request for proposals.
Mm-hmm.
I've been on the bid opening committee for approximately six years. It's not unheard of for a bidder who has submitted a proposal to forget to include a copy or an electronic copy. And in my experience, we've never rejected on the face any proposal that has failed to include those copies. So this is, again, an unusual situation and circumstance.
Okay, but does that, again, my question is, does it put this, does it put this bidder at a disadvantage, number one? Well, answer that first. Does that put this bidder at a disadvantage? I mean, you know, because I'm wondering if, if we, if we, if we don't, does this put him at a disadvantage? Let me just ask it that way.
Respectfully, I don't think that's a legal question. Again, everyone's bid is known at this point, so it's not just their bid, they're not put at any disadvantage that's not reciprocal to any of the other bidders, so everyone's still on the same playing field. They all know what the previous bids are, and it gives them an opportunity to, this company, to adjust their bid, to make sure that they are the little bidder next time if they choose to do so.
Okay, but if they filled out and presented all the documents, why should they be punished?
Well, again, the city always reserves the right to reject any or all bids, and again, it was my understanding that based upon the discussion of the council, that there was some sort of ambiguity within the specifications, that the decision was made to reject all bids and to clarify that in new specifications, so that everybody could be on the same playing field, essentially.
Okay, I guess, I was in that meeting, but I guess I don't, I guess I didn't equate the discussion about the language problem being one where you go through the process of rejecting all bids and doing it again. I don't recall that we did that. Do you recall that we did that?
Again, as I stated earlier, the only issue that was before the council on those meetings was whether or not to award the contract to the low bidder. The council chose not to in that situation, then it was up to the department director to determine how to move forward. In this case, it's apparent that the department director felt that it was the opinion of the council, that there was a problem with the bid specifications, and so then made the decision to reject all bids and try and correct that problem going forward.
Okay, now my next question is, how do we, how do we move forward with, I mean, because we had, we were presented with one set of circumstances that relate to Public Works Department, we were presented with another set of RFPs that, in this particular instance, from the Parks Department. Shouldn't there be some consistency between the departments, so that we're not in this place again?
And I would say there is consistency. This specific specification comes from the Purchasing Department, the Douglas County Purchasing Department. And after the council's discussion and direction the last couple of times, I have already visited with the Purchasing Department to try and make adjustments to that language, so that going forward, when that language is in all RFPs that are promulgated by the purchase, published by the Purchasing Department for all city departments, that that language is consistent across all departments. So it's not language that was published specifically for the Parks Department.
Okay, it's language that's used, that was used in other departments?
That's correct.
Is that what, okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. There are no further lights. There should be either a motion to allow or to deny the appeal. And if allowed, to direct the department accordingly. No further lights, roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
No.
Gray.
No.
Mr. President.
In the event of a tie, what happens on the appeal? Does it fail for lack of majority?
The denial fails, yeah.
Would the converse then, would there then be a motion to award? If, in that event, Madam Clerk...
I'll defer to Pauls.
That just goes back to the department.
Goes back to the department.
Yes.
Motion passes, four to two. Non-action items, items 56 through 89 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Sir, motion. Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero, meeting is adjourned at 3:25.